Good evening and welcome to the City of Helena City Commission Meeting, March 11, 2024. The time is 6:00 PM. This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk.
Assistant City Attorney Hockeluck.
Here.
City Manager Burton.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Administrative minutes were received February 7th. Do we have any addition corrections? If not, the minutes will stand as submitted. Consent agenda. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Tonight, we have on the consent agenda approval of claims. We're asking you to consider the approval of claims paid from January 29, 2024 through February 23, 2024, checks numbered 198265 through 198570, and EFTs numbered 145 through 155, for a grand total of $2,936,345.63.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioners.
I move to approve item A claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Apologies, Mr. Mayor. I don't know what that was. Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Commissioners, do you have any comments? Reporter of the City Attorney, Acting City Attorney Amy Hockeluck, you have the floor.
Mayor and Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Reporter of the City Manager, Manager Burton, you have the floor.
Mayor, Commissioners, following our meeting last week with the Helena Housing Authority, I was directed to put together a draft letter for the mayor's signature that would demonstrate a partnership as the housing authority works to update the HUD fair market rent reevaluation. I believe you all have a copy of that upon the mayor's signature. We'll go ahead and mail that out to Director O'Neill.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it, Mayor.
Thanks. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Kratz, you have the floor. You're just... Who's that? Who's she? She's the Kratz? Oh. Regular items. Consider approval of a community AIDS grant. Administrator Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. In fiscal year 2021 and 2022, the City of Helena received approximately $8.4 million of local recovery funds from the U.S. Treasury and claimed the entire distribution as lost public sector revenue, claimed for police and fire services, which created a $1.8... excuse me, $8.4 million general fund savings. The City Commission has allocated a portion of these savings to the following projects: the Business Improvement District downtown restroom for $98,000; the Exploration Works educational expansion lab expansion for $26,000; the Helena Regional Sports Association Sustainability Study for $47,500; and the Friendship Center property acquisition for $100,000. Since that time, the City Attorney's Office has drafted grant agreements that will govern the distribution of these dollars for the organizations that were allocated, and we are recommending that the City Commission approve these grant agreements so that we can move forward with these projects. Let me know if you have any questions. Other than that, that's everything.
Thank you, Administrator Opitz. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do you have any public comments on this topic? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve of the grant agreements for the Business Improvement District, Exploration Works, the Helena Regional Sports Association, and the Friendship Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Just a question for whom I don't... I'm not sure. On the BID project for the Loo. Am I understanding correctly that all the money has yet to be raised? It doesn't look like all of the funding is put together yet. Is that accurate or not?
Manager Burton?
Mayor, Commissioner, I understand that the project is in motion. The actual location and design is yet to be finally determined, and these funds will not be released until that project has been approved and is ready to go.
And perhaps a follow-up from Mr. Burton. So do... Is it understood who's responsible for the maintenance of the Loo? If it's successful?
Mayor, Commissioner, I don't think that's been worked out in final form as yet.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate the time. Thanks.
Any other comments from the Commission? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider first passage of a resolution amendment to the City Code, Section 7-4-2A, to require sidewalk to be constructed in the right-of-way along the property line, not one foot away, and allow the city manager to adjudicate future sidewalk location variance requests. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is the first reading of this proposed revision to the City Code. As you stated, this is to amend the portion of the City Code that requires the sidewalks to be placed one foot away from the property line. This was a mitigation step that we came up with when, because of the International Fire Code, we widened the streets for local roads to... from nine feet to 10 feet. And if we would have just added those extra two feet, that would have made the right-of-way 62. With having this one-foot buffer there against the property line, we felt that we could use that so that we didn't cause developers to have to adjust their typical 60-foot right-of-way to 62. So, a portion of this revision is to get rid of that one-foot offset. The other revision in this portion of this code is to, instead of the sidewalk variance is coming before the City Commission, they would be reviewed by city staff and then recommendation to the city manager. The manager would have, as proposed, the authority to adjudicate those requests, and in the proposed changes is also an appeal process. So, if the applicant were to wish to appeal the decision, they would appeal it to the City Commission. There's a couple other minor changes in there. So, as currently it stands, the city manager has the authority to do minor deviations, so meandering of the sidewalk and everything, that would be revised to one step below to staff, to the... my position. So, the other portion of this is just the clarification of the purpose of this section of code. During the administrative meeting last week, Commissioner Reed brought up to revise some language in there, and we're still working on that revision. And since this is the first reading, we would get that revised language before you, before you heard it for the second reading. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments? Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Knopki. I was trying to find the revisions so that none of the revisions from Wednesday are in this version. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioners, no. We had the resolution already in the pipeline for the agenda as part of Wednesday because of the short turnaround time. So, none of the things that we discussed on Wednesday are in this, but they will be included in the second reading.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick follow-up, and this is sort of a procedural question. So, if we have something in the first read and it changes in the second read, procedurally, we just make the changes? Does it require a second second read if there's been a change? How does that work?
Mayor, Commissioner Reed, the proper procedure at this point would be an amendment.
An amendment at the time of the second reading?
I'm very sorry. Yes, an amendment at the time of the second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve first passage of a resolution amendment to the City Code, Section 7-4-2A, to require sidewalk to be constructed in the right-of-way along the property line, not one foot away, and allow the city manager to adjudicate future sidewalk location variance requests.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a sidewalk variance request for Twin Creek apartment Lot 5A, Block 4 of the Sleeping Giant Edition subdivision. Director Knopki, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a prime example of if the second reading were to pass of the previous item, this would not be on your agenda, but as we are here, this property has requested to have curbside sidewalk instead of the typical boulevard along there. Some of their reasoning is utilities conflicts and that across the street on Dorothy, that property currently has curbside sidewalk. It's our recommendation to deny this request. The boulevard area from back of curb to property line has about nine and a half feet, excuse me, that would still meet our minimum boulevard of four foot and then a five-foot sidewalk, which the advantage is having even that four-foot boulevard would have snow storage, we have separation of pedestrians from the vehicular traffic. There are, as they stated in their application, some challenges to some current utilities, but in that areas, if they could not get around those utilities, we could meander that into the boulevard in that specific location and then come back out to have the four-foot and five-foot... four-foot boulevard and five-foot sidewalk. So, it is our recommendation to deny the variance request for the Twin Creek Apartments, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Director. Comments or questions from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to deny a sidewalk placement variance allowing curbside placement along the Dorothy and Alice Street right-of-way adjacent to Lot A... I'm sorry, Lot 5A, Block 4 of the Sleeping Giant Edition subdivision.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution modifying the distribution of Helena Affordable Housing Trust Fund to United Housing Partners LLC for the new multifamily housing construction. Coordinator Pritchett... Pritchett? Sorry if I butchered that, but that's...
That is totally fine, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. You have the floor.
Thank you. Danae, how does everybody see this? Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
For the record, my name is Anne Pichet. It's not an easy one, so no worries on that. And I'm here with the Community Development Division. And tonight before you, you have a request that our office received from United Housing Partners to modify the distribution that was previously approved by the Commission in June of 2023. And so, they're just asking for a modification to the fund distribution. As a refresher here, you will see that this property here on the east side of town, this is the vicinity map showing the property here inside the blue box. I know you've seen this map before, but June was a while ago. I want to make sure everybody knows where we're currently at before we start talking about their request. As a quick background here on the trust fund, you have before you the resolutions that have previously been passed, establishing the fund, establishing the advisory board, along with approving the program guidelines. So, currently, the distribution that the City Commission funded back in June is listed in front of you here, and that is the $1 million from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, with a construction loan for three years. At the end of the three-year term, they would pay back $600,000 and convert into what is called a permanent loan that's for 18 years, is $400,000. At the time of application and approval of this project, they were proposing 45 housing units total, serving residents earning 70% or below the area median income. So, as the United Housing Partners came to the city, the Helena Affordable Housing Trust Fund Advisory Board met to discuss their modification request as the guidelines allow for. I did include the guidelines in your packets. If you want to see the full guidelines, the excerpt is here on the slide for you, and the applicant is here if you do have any questions aside from their materials to show that they are requesting this because of undue hardship. So, what you have before you now is their modification request. It is still the original $1 million. They are not asking for additional funding to come out of the trust fund dollars. What they are asking for is instead, at the end of the three-year term, they will... would like to repay $200,000 instead of the $600,000 and convert into the permanent loan $800,000, which they would pay at interest only. The reason this is before you today is that the guidelines previously approved by the Commission does have a $400,000 limit for the permanent loan. And as I showed you on the previous slide, there is the exception that requests can come in to go above that. And for your information, this project since June has now become 72 units. So, this project has now grown to be 27 additional apartments, and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, when they met, felt that that was a huge jump in numbers for what they were considering not additional funds, but just $400,000 that would not come back into the trust fund pool until the end of that term. And so, I know it potentially looked a little confusing. It's not really an additional $400,000, but it's $400,000 they would be using for 18 years instead of three, if that makes sense. And then, just so that you can see, because all of the plans you would have seen before were for the smaller number of units, this is the current site plan for the project that now has the additional 27 units. And if you have any questions, I'm available, and I see that our developer partner is here in the room as well.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the Commission? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. More of a comment that may turn into a question, but generally speaking, I think, you know, our goals for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund were theoretical when they started. I appreciate the perspective of the Housing Trust Fund Board and their comments and recommendation to approve this. I think the goal of the trust fund is to do exactly what we're doing. So, while on paper, this may appear to be not what we plan to do, I think reality should govern the use of those funds, and I'm hopeful that as a Commission, if it looks like having those funds out there for a longer period of time necessitates putting more money into the trust fund, then we can make a decision to do that. So, I don't think that turned into a question at all. It's just a comment. So, I thank you for laying that out succinctly, and I hope we are able to make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Please.
Thank you for the presentation. I wonder how... How much is in the left in the trust right now without this? And then, I mean, this just means we have fewer dollars to revolve more quickly. And was there any discussion with the Advisory Committee about the lack of being able to revolve those funds? Mayor, Commissioner, yes. Currently, we do have the spring cycle open right now for applicants to apply for these funds through April 26th. Currently, right now, there's just under $1 million available in the fund. The guidelines do have a $1 million maximum. So, in the event that an entity came in, there would be enough for an entity to hit nearly the maximum request. And to answer your second question, yes. The advisory board had some discussions back and forth about the best use of the funds. And the conclusion was that while $400,000 would potentially be sitting out unavailable for other developers, for other new housing, for a longer period of time than they originally anticipated, the consensus among the members was that this project is now basically like a second project just came in but didn't ask for more funds. I don't know that that would always be the case in future requests, which is part of why we're just asking for the modification to this one, but not a change to the guidelines at this time, and just use the section of the guidelines that allows for this type of request. There were some concerns that this is now funding that $400,000 that might not be available in the coming years. We have had no applicants in the last application cycle, so they weighed that as well, just so that you all know. They weighed that and said, well, if we had a line of applications that we then could not fund, that they would potentially consider it different, but given there were no applications in the last cycle, that this is a largely increased project for no additional funds out of the trust fund, they recommended that these funds be used that way, and they may or may not be encouraging additional funds be put into it later, but that was not part of the official motion. Okay. No, that's helpful. I do love that this project includes so many units that are 30% below AMI and 60% or below, so I think that's encouraging that there are even more units for that group of people, but really helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments from the Commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Commission, City Manager Burton. My name is Seth O'Connell. I work for United Housing Partners, part of the team that's bringing this development. While it's never our goal to come and ask for more money, as you could see, this project has changed dramatically since we first applied for it last spring. Part of that was not understanding the full extent of House Bill 819. So, once we were able to bring in that coal trust loan that was made available, we were able to grow this project by about 60%. I do want to thank the city for having these funds available. I can't tell you how impactful it was to getting this project brought to Helena. This is a... Lytech development is a very, very competitive field, and when we saw that we had the project solidified, we found that actually the market for tax credits had changed dramatically, and so we really had to go back and sharpen our pencils, and one of those steps was to ask the city to help us again, and they came to our aid, and we've just been very, very thankful to have Anne, all the city staff, from Ellie and planning to the Helena Trust Fund Board, to just be so productive in bringing this much-needed housing to Helena. And I thank the Commissioners for noticing. Not only did we grow the project, we also extended the number of 30% very deep affordability project or housing that was going to be included. So, we hope we can get this approved and get this project underway. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised. Tyson O'Connell.
You have the floor, Mr. O'Connell.
This is Tyson O'Connell with United Housing Partners, Mayor and Commission. I just want to echo exactly what Seth said. Thank you, and thank the Helena Trust Fund Board for listening to our request and approving, and at least for the Board for approving our request. We greatly appreciate it, and we're excited to keep moving forward on this larger project.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have another hand raised. Michael O'Neill.
You have the floor, Mr. O'Neill.
Mr.?
You have the floor, Mr. O'Neill. Okay. We'll come back. Any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve a resolution modifying the distribution of the Helena Affordable Housing Trust Funds to United Housing Partners LLC for the new multifamily housing construction.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would just want to thank the applicants for the work that they're doing. I think this is a great project.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Public hearings. Consider a resolution identifying the Helena City Commission property priority projects for application for funding through the State and Local Infrastructure Partnership Program. Administrator Opitz, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. The State and Local Infrastructure Partnership Program, the acronym SLIPA, is a state-funded program that helps cities and towns fund maintenance and repair of local infrastructure on a partnership basis where the local governments contribute 25% cash match. The program was authorized in the 2023 Montana Legislature via House Bill 355. For the biennium starting in July 1st of 2023, $20 million was appropriated from the state's general fund surplus to the Montana Department of Commerce to distribute funds to grant recipients awarded within compliance of House Bill 355. Procedurally, there were some steps that we needed to take in order to access our allocation. House Bill 355 dictates that the legislative body must solicit and review proposals and hold a public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening, based on the recommended priority order of proposals. Once approved, the priority list is transmitted to the Montana Department of Commerce along with our applications. For consideration, those applications will be due on March 30th. The Montana Department of Commerce then reviews those applications, as well as the list created by the legislative body. And to be clear, the department does not... And to be clear, the department does not substitute their judgment for the legislative body's judgment in terms of how to prioritize those projects. If they're found within compliance, then they should be approved. The city's allocation this year was $458,775. And then, of course, the city would need to provide 25% cash match of the total project cost. The bill specifies that projects receiving awards must be under contract by the end of this calendar year, December 31st, 2024, and completed by December 31st of 2027. Eligible projects could have included drinking water systems, wastewater systems, fire suppression systems that are independent of the drinking water system, streets, roads, bridges, landfills, streetlights, airports, public grounds and buildings, and projects that expand existing water and wastewater treatment plants that were operating at 90% of their design capacity. House Bill 355 also specified that priority must be given to projects that maintain publicly-owned drinking water systems, publicly-owned wastewater treatment systems, or municipal fire suppression systems that are independent of the water system. At the meeting in November, the city solicited proposals from staff and developed three proposals for projects that we thought fit within the parameters of House Bill 355. That included a fire suppression system project at Fire Station Number Two, replacement of the bioreactor mixers at the wastewater treatment plant, and replacement of ADA pedestrian ramps along City Rites of Way. At the February 7th administrative meeting, you all provided your individual priority lists, which were then consolidated at the February 21st meeting. At that time, the fire station project was withdrawn because the other two projects were shovel-ready and ready to go. So at this time, the consensus was to move forward. Two projects, the bioreactor mixer replacement at the wastewater treatment plant and ADA replacement ramps. If approved, these two applications would exhaust the full $458,775. And I'm available for any questions related to this project or this grant application or either of the projects.
Thank you, Administrator Opitz. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Briefly, I don't know if Administrator Opitz wants to answer this or Mr. Leland online, but I'm wondering if someone can maybe talk a little bit about the energy savings we'll experience by pursuing the bioreactor mixer replacement?
See if she turns around.
Oh, I didn't even know you were back there.
Mayor, Commissioner, we're going to see about a 40% savings and overall about 20%. We got about 50% with the previous upgrades of the blowers. So we are going to see a significant one, but overall about 20%.
Thank you. Director Leland, any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I move to approve the resolution identifying the Helena City Commission priority projects for application for funding through the State and Local Infrastructure Partnership Program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider final passage of an ordinance amending and updating the use of Public Rights of Way Title VII, Chapter 13, to comply with current state and federal law and reflect the current telecommunications market environment. Attorney Hockelock, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioners. Before you tonight for final passage is, as the mayor just read, proposed ordinance that would update city code to be in line with state and federal law as well as the current telecommunications environment. The code was last touched, much of it, in 2009 and 2013. As we're all aware, the telecommunications regulations, as well as the operating environment, have changed significantly. I do have Bob Duchin online. He has done the bulk of the work on this from River Oaks Communications Corporation. And just procedurally, we've not received any public comments on this topic. And this has been before you at the October 25th administrative meeting and also then at the commission meeting, February 12th last month. I will fill in with answers to questions as I can, but I will turn it over to Mr. Duchin, who is far more knowledgeable about this than I. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Hockelock. Any comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment at this time.
Any online?
No.
So Duchin, you have anything to add?
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I do not have anything additional to add.
Thank you. I'll entertain... Okay, Madam Clerk. Public comments? No, no. I'll entertain a motion. We don't have the motion yet, right?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the updated and amended city code ordinance amending Title VII, Chapter 13, entitled Use of Public Rights of Way as Presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool and repealing Resolution Number 20820. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. Tonight, I have the final resolution before you to establish fees at the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool. These fees were brought to the commission at an admin meeting and also a first reading of the resolution in February. This is the final public hearing reading of these fees. I know that the staff went through a lot of analysis and work and met with me to establish fees. These are also another modest increase of what we raised last year in order to offset some of the rising costs of staffing costs out of the pool as well as chemical and utility costs out there. I think with the establishment of these fees, that gets us into more of a historical cost recovery model that we've seen at the pool, about 60-40 recovery, 40% from fees and 60% from general tax revenue contribution toward the pool. I know that there was also a question about, from the commission, about if the pool offers any scholarships for such as swim lessons and things like that. I do know that there are several programs out there that do offer scholarships through K's Kids and through YMCA, and there's a couple others. And I think our Parks manager is here to answer to any of those other scholarship programs that do exist for the pool. But tonight, I'm just here to present the final reading and can take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Director Danielson. I had posed a question based on public comment that I received about the possibility, and I understand for right now, it does not relate to these fees, and that's fine. But exploring between now and pool opening, the possibility of setting what might be referred to as a reduced fee for community members who qualify for, for example, WIC or SNAP or other programs where we might be able to determine eligibility for a reduced fee and add that in later. I do think I heard from members of the public, there will be some who qualify for the scholarships that were provided by the Parks Department for swim lessons and other things, but that the increase does make it difficult for a number of families to access the pool. And I'd like us to explore the option between now and pool opening and sort of establish that for years going forward to have a reduced rate available for some of our community members. So like I said, I will not be opposing the fees as put forth tonight, but I would like to see what options we might have going forward to provide that. It seems that Mr. Manager has a comment.
Thank you, Commissioner. Manager Burton.
Mayor, Commissioners, we do not have the work done, but we will pursue that conversation and bring it back to the commission with what we find.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Any other comments from the... Go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I get, so to clarify one of the comments you made, we're, right now, our general fund is subsidizing the pool by about 60%. Is that accurate?
Without these increases, last year when I did this analysis, the general fund was subsidizing at about a rate of 65, 64, 65% of the pool, which is normal with a, you know, a community-owned pool. You know, it's hard to set, you know, rates to do a complete cost recovery for a community pool. It is a community asset. It is a city facility. And so the general taxpayers do participate in the operations of that type of a facility. But looking at historical contribution percentages with these increases, it will get us back to about that 60-40 that we've historically seen before COVID.
Okay, great. Just one comment, Mr. Mayor. I think this is something, I'm not going to speak for the rest of the commission, but I think we've all had similar sentiments at not something we take lightly on an entity like the pool to raise rates. But I also think it's important for us to keep in mind the long-term well-being of the pool. I'd hate to see us in the situation that some other communities are in by having to consider to, you know, fully close down a community pool because of inability to keep up with the costs. So really excited to see where the conversation goes about what other help we can find for young swimmers that, you know, eligible for free or reduced lunch, WIC, whatever. But not something I think any of us take lightly. And I really appreciate all the work that staff's done to do the analysis. It's been, you know, more than a year in the making trying to find the right balance of maintaining the pool and keeping rates affordable.
And Mayor, may I add that these rates were evaluated against other public pools within the state, and that puts us right at the median level for what we're charging for entrance and pool rentals and swim lessons, et cetera.
Thank you, Director Danielson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. In line with the other commissioners, I've got a question regarding the fees. What constitutes as a non-resident? Is that someone that's outside of the county or outside of the state?
Outside of the city limits.
Outside of city limits. And I would like to not make a proposal, but having, the rate from last year was $5 for a resident, went up to $7. And the same increase is for non-residents. Could there, I'd like to see possibly the conversation about increase for residents, not so much, but more so for out of, for non-residents to be increased by $3? Is that a possibility?
Mayor, Commission, I think that there's been a lot of work to go into setting this established schedule as it is. I'm certainly welcome to entertain any changes or edits that the commission would like to make to the fee schedule. I will tell you that it's difficult to have lifeguards and high schoolers admitting, you know, 10, 15, 20, 25 people at a time and trying to verify their residency. We do not have a residency verification system. So we go by word of mouth and the honor system. And I'd like to think that, you know, most people are honest. But we did explore a couple of years ago about trying to implement a residency verification system. At the time, it was about $65,000 to implement something like that. The, there was some hesitation on the Parks Director at the time because of the lines that would accumulate trying to establish whether someone is a resident or not. So at this time, I don't know until we explore further how we can more efficiently verify resident versus non-resident. I'm not, I'm not certain of the impact that that would create.
Thank you very much, Director Danielson.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the commission? I just, I just want to say, I think you guys should continue to explore that idea because the people of Helena, they continue to pay the full weight of the county entertainment. So we need to start exploring that kind of stuff. So I would encourage you to continue to explore.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do you have any public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Last Chance Splash Water Park and Pool and repealing Resolution Number 20820.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a resolution to establish fees to be charged for the Bill Roberts Municipal Golf Course. Director Danielson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Tonight, we have the final public hearing for the rate establishment of golf course fees. This was presented to the commission in an administrative meeting and also first reading of the resolution in February. And this is the final hearing and public hearing and reading of the resolution. The fees that are in the exhibit were established and reviewed and approved by the Golf Advisory Commission and are bringing forth before you tonight to, for final adoption.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments on this topic? Director Danielson.
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, my name is Ken Bailey. I'm a resident of Helena. I retired three years ago, and I just turned 70 yesterday. So I think that classifies me as a senior citizen. And I looked at this from the perspective of other senior citizens, and I'm at best puzzled and actually a little appalled because when I look at these numbers in the table that's provided, in the current estimate of revenue, revenue that comes from the senior citizen categories is about 30%. When I look at the added revenue from the change in fees, it, what I get is $23,825 out of $43,900, which is 54% of the increase. And so I'm kind of puzzled. Why would you stick it to senior citizens in this change in fees? I have to admit on a side question that's not exactly senior citizen, but there's no increase in the fees for just paying for punch cards or greens fees, which is what are paid for by tourists, visitors, businessmen, taking people out for golf. So again, all of the increases go to residents, not to non-residents. And in the residents, it preferentially goes to senior citizens. I did say to myself, it's only 50 bucks, you know, what else would I do with my money? And of course, you guys all know the answer. There was that 35% increase in property values, and the Supreme Court said 30 mils is 30 mils. You guys want another fire station and more firemen and policemen. The school district has four levies, I think they're coming out with. And I'm honestly not sure what the county is doing. And all of those increases are harder for senior citizens to swallow than for many other citizens in the community. So with that in mind, I'd ask you in your consideration, I know it's late in the process, but to please go back and ask the administrators, why is it proposed this way? And then the second thing I'll ask you to do is to not approve it and ask that it be reworked to be more equitable to the senior citizens in our community. You know, I looked before I came, and both Lewis and Clark County and Helena, about 21% of the population is classified as senior citizen like me. That's a substantial portion. And again, I kind of questioned, why do we want to disproportionately affect those senior citizens? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did you get the address and everything? Yes, would you please provide that, sir?
I live at 1101 Idaho Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question for, I'm not sure if, not for you, sir, for whomever from Parks Department who could answer this question. I admit, I did not notice that all the increases were to residents versus punch cards previously. I just had not processed that. Could you explain a bit about what the decision-making was in making the choice to only do increases on the residential sort of pass versus the punch cards?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner Reed. Is Todd Fitter online? I'm going to defer to the Golf Superintendent who helped to establish these fees, and he's online to answer that question.
Madam Clerk. Hello, this is Todd Fitter. Can you please repeat the question?
Sure. The question is, could you explain the rationale behind the increases being exclusively in the category of season passes versus the punch cards where there are no increases proposed for next year?
We didn't increase the daily rate or the punch card rate because during our analysis, when we were looking at our rates compared to other public golf courses in the state, we were pretty true to form. We might have been a little bit higher than municipalities, but we were a little bit lower than privately owned public golf courses. So for this current season, or for next year, we did not propose raising those rates.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I wonder, two questions. One, if I recall, those were some of the rates that we did increase during the last budget season. Is that accurate?
Mayor.
Those rates were, those rates were increased during the last rate increase, yes.
Okay. And then I wonder, could you maybe talk a little bit about some of the increased costs of running the golf course, either Todd or Sheila? But I know that was one of the things we talked a lot about during the last budget cycle, was keeping up with the rates to just run a municipal course. So I'm wondering if maybe you can explain those.
I can certainly take that, or unless Todd wants to speak to it as well. He's pretty well-versed in the operating costs out at the golf course.
Todd, you have the floor.
You know, since I started over there, we've seen massive increases in not only our payroll, but also our heating bill, you know, water bill, all that kind of stuff, but just the cost of doing business for parts, for golf carts, for golf clubs, for all of that kind of stuff. It's jumping at such a rapid rate that we needed to increase our fees and draw in a little bit more money in order to cover those costs.
Do we have any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor. I know we are late in the game, and this is final reading. I am concerned, looking at it, at the, you know, the comparative cost of a senior pass, the difference between a senior pass and adult pass is negligible. The senior pass is what we sold the most of, and it does feel like we are putting the burden on the senior members of our community, which I, that does not sit super well with me. I'm wondering, procedurally, Mr. Manager or Madam Acting City Attorney, if we were to request a revision to these fees, does that cause, what does that do to our process and approval in our current timelines?
Mayor and Commissioner Reed, you are able to propose an amendment at this time. I believe what you'll probably hear from others is that if you propose an amendment at this time, you probably will not have, you know, the budgetary implications lined out of what that amendment will do. But you are able to make an amendment at this meeting if you so choose.
Mr. Mayor, so Director Danielson, correct me if I'm wrong, but we are, for the adult pass, the increase, proposed increase is fifty dollars. For a couple, a hundred dollars, so fifty dollars each. And then for senior, fifty dollars. And then senior couple, a hundred dollars, fifty dollars each. Is that accurate?
Yes.
So we'd be, I mean, you probably, I don't think anyone could probably do the math right now, but we would have to increase all of those other passes by quite a bit more than fifty dollars to make up the difference if we lowered the senior rate.
To maintain the same budgetary impact, yes, Mayor and Commissioner Dean, yes. Mayor, I might also add, and I'm certainly open to amendments, and we can, we can, you know, manage that as, as you, according to your desires. I will also say that we took in mind that the golf course has new debt service. We took on payment of golf carts. And so we did raise the golf cart rental fees in order to help offset that debt service. We're also proposing to reduce the general fund contribution to help pay for the clubhouse debt service as well. So it would be preferable if you chose to reduce the senior rate to pass that on to the other rates, so that the budgetary impact would be negligible.
Thank you, Director Danielson. Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Maybe for Mr. Fitterer, did this discussion, any of this discussion come up with the Golf Advisory Board? And if so, did they have thoughts on it?
It did not come up with the Golf Advisory Board. They had no comments.
Thank you.
Maybe, Mr. Mayor, just one final question connected to that. The, Mr. Fitterer, the Golf Advisory Board did support this rate schedule. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a resolution to establish fees to be charged at the Bill Roberts Golf Course, repealing Resolution Two Zero Seven Nine Four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the Commission? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Any finer comments from the Commissioner?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
This is the second meeting I've attended concerning the recycle bins that were placed behind our home on McHugh. I've written multiple emails, and I haven't gotten a response hence why I'm here tonight. This evening, my son and I picked up trash that has blown out, and that was what our first argument was about months ago. So I'm here to ask, once again, please consider removing these bins from behind our neighborhood. I live on Golden Estates, seven nine seven Insulator Avenue. McHugh is our backyard, McHugh Road. I've offered to call Kim Smith, the private landowner. We've chatted. He's agreed to remove them off his property or even move them on his property away from our homes, and nothing has been done by the city or the county. And we just would like to ask why and possibly revisit moving these entirely away from our neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am. I know we received your last letter, I think it was today, and I'm not sure if you're aware, but Manager Burton did speak with his, the transportation to look into this. So they're looking into it.
Forgive me, but I've heard this before, and I'm really frustrated. We were woken up this morning. We were woken up this weekend at seven thirty in the morning. My son has surgery tomorrow. I can't afford to have this problem anymore. He's going to need to have very quiet areas in our home, and we're not having that right now. I'm just, I'm asking if we can possibly even remove these to the fairgrounds as a placement in while we try and figure out a solution to the problem.
You, in your email, you did mention about the owner, and that's what he, Manager Burton, is looking into. So I mean, I don't know what else to say, but he is looking to it. I read his email that he forwarded to his employee to look into it, so.
I just am confused why. I've had no communication from the city or the county for months, and I've emailed. This is why I've shown up tonight, because I haven't been able to get in contact. I've emailed both of you multiple times, as well as Ryan Leland and Ms. Griffiths, and I've had no one respond. And it's super frustrating. We just feel ignored, and when my son and I have to spend our afternoon cleaning up the mess that's not maintained by the city, that's beyond frustrating. So I don't understand why they cannot be moved to a location while we figure out the problem, a solution to this problem. I just don't understand why that can't happen. They're constantly moved every week. They're dumped. They're taken to the dump to be emptied. I don't understand. If they're moved that much, why can't they be moved to the city fairground or the county fairgrounds while we find a solution to the problem?
Mayor, we've reached out and had discussions with the county up to this point, and we'll reengage them, but the county does not want them moved. And unless there's a differing position by the county with an alternate location, that's kind of where the conversation is right now.
The alternate location could be the fairgrounds.
Have you contacted the county?
Mm-hmm.
And?
No response.
Okay. Manager Burton, would you reengage the county to find out, as best we can? Yes, I will. Bring a resolution to this?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I apologize. Could you please state your name for the record?
Kelly Van Dyke.
Thank you.
Are there any others for public comments to the Commission? Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned.